Good evening and welcome to the May 8th meeting of the school committee. I call this meeting to order at 10 o'clock. This meeting is being both audio and videotaped by Elcat. Is anyone doing either of these? Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call starting to my left. Gregory Thompson.
Georgina Yu.
Rich Ficero.
Bill Fonseca.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Elizabeth Marsden-Boucher.
Valerie Aneer, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Pamela Lehr, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Kathy Solier, Department of Secretary.
Okay. Moving on to item two, approval of minutes. Item 2.1, approval of the April 10th, 2017 executive session meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the April 10th, 2017 executive session meeting minutes.
There a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Item 2.2, approval of the April 10th, 2017 regular session meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the April 10th, 2017 regular session meeting minutes with just a minor amendment, if I may.
Okay. Can I get a second first?
A second.
Okay. Greg, go ahead.
Item 2.2, Greg, we move to approve. There's an extra letter in there. Minor.
We just can't get rid of the D.
Yeah. Thank you. Hi, Em. Hey. Is there anything else? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item three, committee and subcommittee communications. Emmy, we can start with you.
So, on Wednesday, the Key Club is hosting a blood drive run by the Bay State Hospital, and it's gonna be like mostly, most of the entire school day, and it's where students are like 16 and over can donate blood. They community service hours for it, too.
Okay.
So like seniors could get some hours in before they can graduate.
They get the hours for donating the blood.
Yeah.
Good deal.
It's an interesting deal.
Literally your.
Blood for time, right?
It was discussed a lot.
They really gave their blood and graduated, yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. Thank you. Greg, let's wait until.
I just had an opportunity to go on a field trip with the fifth graders last week to the Boston Science Museum. Very well coordinated. Noticeable how well the teachers interact with their students and the relationship and the rapport that they all have together. It's good to see them out and about and on the road and learning stuff at the Science Museum and getting into the big city, so that was a good time. And that's all I've got.
Thank you.
I did remember one thing. I do want to at least give a thank you to our PTOs at all the schools for staff appreciation. Teacher Appreciation Week, I was able to go over to Mountain View and help out in the classroom while the teacher or the para got to enjoy their lunch break. And I really just wanna thank the parents that contribute to the whole day across all the schools. I know it's one of the best days for the teachers, and it really just shows how much, you know, the parents appreciate, too, and the kids love it for the teachers, too. They know exactly what's going on, and they're excited to hear about it. It's really special.
Okay. Congratulations.
It feels like a long time. We haven't been four weeks.
It's been a very long time. I have to remember.
Yeah, it has been a long. A couple of things. First, the Awards Night, as always, was wonderful. The Michael Crowe testimony was very well done. He had about, I think we counted, like 53 alumni showed up, which is kinda neat for that, you know? Some traveled quite a bit for it. I attended a marijuana hearing with Bill, and.
A potential question on the ballot.
Ballot, yeah.
Not just marijuana.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. Great hearing, yeah. So, yeah, so I kept up with a few sports and saw a few wins, so that always felt good.
Were there a couple of wins?
Yeah, a couple.
Oh.
All right. Beth?
Well, first of all, I wanna say I appreciate that Dr. Flanagan and Dr. Allen reached out to the parents of the town, of the students, about that.
Thirteen years.
Thirteen reasons why that's on Netflix right now, and it is definitely something that I think a parent should watch prior to their students watching it. It sounds like it's pretty graphic and goes above and beyond, and I think that's really a discussion for families to have. I also wanted to mention that Deb Barry had sent a lovely email about the Mountain View Robotics Trip. It sounded like it was a once in life, it was just an amazing time. The students really got a lot out of it, as did the parents. The parents were just, I think, blown away about the entire process. And obviously with the Awards Night, I was able to, I wasn't able to go, but I went to the Awards Night, but I couldn't go to the Art Night. But art work is still up.
Art show, yeah.
Yeah, which was really nice. I'm happy that they left it up, and the timing coordinates really nicely with the Awards Night, too, so.
You know, I wanna compliment here High School Student Party, you know? That's a very busy car, 'cause the lunch ends up and everything comes on, and they've messed that up, and nothing's been touched. Everything is immaculate. I just, it's such.
That's impressive.
Yeah, it's such a sign of class for our student party, it really is.
No, it really is. I've said that in the, I think that's.
Yeah.
And that's what I got.
Okay.
The Robotics press release, sort of a synopsis of their trip, has been sent out to The Reminder and The Republican, and it's up on our webpage.
Okay, good. All right. I attended the public service hearing on the marijuana law. It will be, the marijuana issue will be a ballot question June 6th. Also attended Awards Night with Rich. Congratulations to all the award winners, it was a phenomenal night. And Day on the Hill a couple of weeks ago was a huge success in the eyes of MASC. We had four or five legislators show up, and they're all speaking about the Foundation Budget Review Commission's recommendations and trying to figure out a way to start implementing them. In order to bring, to refresh everybody's memory, Foundation Budget Review Commission has recommended to bring the foundation budget up to the 21st century standards, and because it hasn't been looked at since 1993, the cost would be $2 billion. So, they're talking about starting now, not trying to implement it all at once, but start now, implement a little bit at a time, and I do know that the Senate is gonna take it up and start looking at it, and as I get more information, I'll let everybody know. Okay. Moving along to item four, opportunity for visitors to address the committee. Seeing none.
I'd like to amend the agenda. I'd like to move 7.3, certificate of attainment, as our next agenda item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Okay. We have Dr. Welsh here, or Director of Student Services. In your packet, you have a memo from Dr. Welsh to me, and it's regarding three certificates of attainment. As you go through that, well, Dr. Welsh can walk us through what that entails. There's a checklist and a policy and procedure around that.
So, thank you very much. We have three students this year who are candidates to receive a certificate of attainment, meaning that they have fulfilled the majority of requirements for graduation from East Slum Meadow High School, with the notable exception of passing the MCAS. These are students with IEPs who attend private schools in the area. None of the three students who you have before you currently attend East Slum Meadow High School, they're placed out of district. And all of them have been working with their private schools, as well as with the Guidance Department here at East Slum Meadow, to ensure that all of the requirements, such as you have on the checklist, have been met. I personally, I keep a conversation going with the private schools. I notify them of our graduation requirements, as well as of the requirements for certificate of attainment, 'cause there's sometimes a misunderstanding about that. And then I work with our Guidance Department, so that they know who the students are and give them contact information for students and their families, as well as for the private schools. My office receives all of the students' report cards and transcripts, so we keep kind of an ongoing log, because I really wanna make sure that nothing is left to chance, and that all of the required elements are present. So, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Just one note, Dr. Welsh, under criteria, the East Slum Meadow School System graduation requirements.
Yes.
The community service graduation requirement is not listed.
I know that. I was actually surprised to see it myself, but I took that from your policy, procedures manual. I do know that all three students have completed community service, and that it is documented with Mr. Macarini, because I have been saying that all along. So, that information is there, but I don't know if, I didn't know if it was an omission or not, but when I put the packets together, I was actually surprised to see it myself.
Okay.
Is our policy ever slacking?
I'm wondering if just that one entry was left out.
Or it was added later on. I wonder if the policy hasn't been updated since.
Well, this.
We'll look at the policy to make sure.
This, according to this, it says approved by school committee, March 18th, 2013. So, I'm wondering if we updated the certificate of attainment four years ago and inadvertently left community service out. But I think if we can take a look at that, and we will put it back in there, I think that's a simple.
I think the policy's up.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I will say, just because, again, I was under the impression before I actually sat down to do the paperwork, that community service was required, so I had the documentation.
It is.
The documentation.
But we will, we will update the policy to reflect that, so there is no confusion in the future, and it will become part of the checklist.
Perfect.
Okay.
Great.
Anything else?
Well, I think we have to vote on these individually.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So, I make a motion to accept the certificate of attainment for student number one.
There a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving along to student number two. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the certificate of attainment for student number two.
There a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now moving on to student number three. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the certificate of attainment for student number three.
There a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Welsh.
Thank you. Awesome.
Okay, moving. Moving along to item five. Public hearing on our fiscal year 2018 school committee budgets, so I will formally open the public here, our, I will formally open our budget hearing. Gordon?
Thank you. In your packet, you have copies of these slides that are up on the three TVs. You also have a copy of the spreadsheet that just details the breakdown of where the budget numbers are divided up between all the different account line items. These are also on our webpage, spreadsheet and an executive summary. So, without further ado, we'll give you an overview of our budget request for the fiscal year 2018. And basically, what any of our budgets do, and our budget requests hopes to do, is that we continue to move toward our goals and our mission for all of our students. That's the key. All of our students should be supported by what we're putting in place. So, what does that mean? One of the overarching goals is that we wanna continue to focus on providing opportunities for students pre-K through 12. The opportunities may look different on the pre-K or first and second grade level, but pre-K through 12, we wanna build opportunities where we can have our students start to show critical thinking, problem solving, collaborating. Collaborating both with their peers, but also with their teachers, and then as they get into the upper grades with the community at large. That's where a Community Action Learning Course comes in. Communicating effectively, and hopefully that's improving throughout their entire academic career in all our grades, both in a written and an oral format. And then utilizing technology. A lot of people feel that technology is like 21st century skill, but no, really, it's a tool to help you get these other skills. Something I say every year, hopefully it's not becoming passe, that our budget is the most strategic factor in impacting every student's success and allowing all our students to reach his or her full potential. And that's something that I think, obviously, the school committee, but the town as a whole, takes very seriously. As you can see, since I've been superintendent, we've had very good increases. We've had a few lean years, but overall, some very good increases that have allowed us to continue to move forward and move all our students forward. And as we get further into the presentation, you'll be able to see some of the results of sort of investing in our students, if you will. Our request this year is 2.4, so as you look, we had some really good years, 2012, 2013, 2014. Then we started to come down a little bit, but we're averaging in the last few years right in that 2% range, and this year's, the request is not much different. But it will allow us to move students forward. You're always trying to achieve a balance between fiscal responsibility and making sure we're doing what's right for all our students. This is just a different way to look at it. This is the per pupil spending for the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative over the last few years. Interestingly enough, you see the state average embold there. Just this past year, in FY 2016, do we have one of the seven districts in the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative move above the state's per pupil spending average of $15,511. That's AGWAN. So, you see, as you come down, we're roughly fifth in that list. And again, it's achieving that balance between fiscal responsibility and making sure we're supporting our students properly. And although we're fifth, as you start to look at what the results are that our students have been achieving, now, this is a look at the aggregate achievement, so it's all grade levels that are involved in the state assessment. This is ELA, and the first bar, where you see second there, the red bar, that's us, and we're just a few points in terms of aggregate achievement off of the leader of the LPVAC. And then our growth also is second, and that's the shorter bar. Remember, with growth, anything above the 50th percentile is considered average to above-average growth. When you get above the 60th percentile, at least the way the state defines it, now you're looking at above-average growth. This is math, and again, you see very close to the top there, but second in the LPVAC and second in growth. Now, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education uses different districts. We tend to stay local, and we're very connected with the seven districts in the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, however, looks at, these could change, these communities, these are the communities currently that we're closest to in a lot of the criteria that the department likes to collect data on. That's anywhere from enrollment to percentage of special education students, to percentage of students on free and reduced lunch, to percentage of students that might be involved in English language learning, all of that. So, these are the districts right now that Desi compares us with. And when you look at straight-up achievement, we're first in ELA, math, and then fourth in science. And then you look at growth percentile, we slide a little bit towards the middle, but again, the key number for us, as we continue to review growth, is we wanna be above that 50th percentile, where we're seeing average to above-average growth. So, this budget request for fiscal year 2018 basically looks to continue what you're seeing in those charts, making sure that if programs have been successful, or identified to be successful in moving our students forward in their academics and in their learning, we wanna continue to move those forward, as well as obviously bring all of our staff forward as well into fiscal year 2018. That's the first priority. Second priority, after going through many different requests, and all of you have been part of that, where we started with requests that are incredibly, in my mind, legitimate, however, you're trying to keep that balance of, again, fiscal responsibility, making sure you're moving all your students forward. So, we started with about $330,000 worth of requests, and we narrowed it down to really these three remaining bullet points, after you bring your successful programming and all staff forward. That's taking a look at our curriculum renewal line item, which about four years ago, the committee voted to put in place and make sure that in our cyclical and systematic way, where all content areas are in a five-year cycle, looking at their curriculum, how it aligns to state standards or national standards, also how it is supporting their students, how well it's supporting their students in moving forward. As they get to the second year of that cycle, with three, four, and five being implementation and starting to look at how the resources are working and the materials are working for the students, first year is where they do a thorough analysis of the resources they have and start to identify possibly other resources that might be more beneficial. Second year is where they start to get money that's in this line item to make purchases of those materials that are identified. So, we'd like to increase that by $50,000, and most specifically, and this is something that goes back to the school committee meetings that we had in the fall, where we're starting to look at state assessment data, but we can just go back a few slides ago, and you look at that fourth in science. So, that's an area where standards are changing. We need to make sure we're continuing to do the work to align to those standards, but we also have to make sure that we're, we have materials that are supporting our students that not only are aligned to the standards, but make the most sense for our students who are here in our classrooms. At the high school level, that oftentimes goes beyond just textbooks and materials, it may actually be equipment in the labs, which we certainly need. So, this money would go first and foremost to start helping us with that, as well as taking a look at some of our AP textbooks, which are beginning to get past the 10-year mark, which for the College Board is something that, they no longer acknowledge that program if your textbook is over 10 years. So, that's one priority that came through a pretty good vetting process in terms of all of our requests. Then the next priority is to restore a third-grade teacher position at Mountain View that three years ago, when we were in tighter budget times, there was a retirement, which chose at that time not to renew that or restore that position, replace that position, so we allowed the void from retirement to stay there. Over the last three years, at Mountain View, our class sizes at the third-grade level have risen to where they're now 25 in a class. And we'd like to see that start to come down and be representative of what we have had across the district, at least in my first six years. So, we're looking to restore a third-grade teacher there. And then the last one's probably the most challenging to understand, but basically, we're looking to take some, a position that's already in our budget at .7 FTEs, full-time equivalent, that's what FTE stands for, and just increase that by .3, so that that position would be a 1.0 full-time equivalent. And this is a position, it's a speech and language pathologist's assistant, and it would be at Meadowbrook. Reason being that Meadowbrook, as our pre-K to school, has the most students that are receiving speech and language services, which makes sense. There are youngest students, there are students newest to formal education. It also is the school that houses our preschool program. And so, students in town who turn three, and through early intervention have been identified in need of services, they are eligible to come and receive services at Meadowbrook School. And so, currently, we're servicing about 135 students, but that number generally increases as we go through any given school year. This would help us handle that, handle the increased needs and make sure we're supporting students correctly. Speech and language pathologist assistants can deliver services as long as they are working under a licensed speech pathologist. We have two licensed speech pathologists at Meadowbrook.
Is that a Unit A position?
It's a, it's actually a at-will position.
That's at-well, I think.
Yeah. There was at one time, I think, crossover between paras and this position, but this is actually a licensed position.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, what does all that mean? Well, that means, basically, that brings us to about a 2.4% increase from fiscal year 2017, or a total request of around $29,245,201. Ballpark. No, that's.
That's the $1.
No ballpark.
$1.
$1.
At the end.
Yes.
Nothing, nothing less to get to the 2.4. But I would be remiss if I, and we usually include this in our budget presentation, the whole picture. It's difficult to see that slide, it's probably easier, and I'll post the whole PowerPoint on the website after this meeting. The whole picture takes our request, the $29 million you saw on the previous slide, and then starts to add in grants that every year we apply for and receive, either from the state or from the federal government. These are grants such as Title I, grants such as the IDEA special education grant, Title II-A, the circuit breaker, that's a big one. Circuit breaker is money, grant money that comes from the state that helps offset the cost that districts are spending on special education programming that's above approximately $40,000. So, the cert, every year, we have to go through a pretty lengthy process to show individually, with each case, where we're spending over that $40,000, and then you're only getting about 70% of what you spend over $40,000, 70% of what you spend over $40,000 back the next year. So, the circuit breakers, both a grant program to help districts deal with rising special education costs, and it's a, it becomes a revolving account. Anything in there that I missed?
No, we just like to, you know, of course, be transparent and show the whole picture, because the reality is, although we're requesting $29,245,201, if you look at the very bottom, after you add in the grants, and after you add in revolving accounts, other, you know, sources that help us fund the education, it's really $33,204,445. So, again, we just wanna be transparent and show the whole picture to.
So, it's always an interesting cycle, and actually, this year with the new government, we're closer to, at least with the state's adoption of the timeline for adoption of the new budget. But we won't learn whether grants are cut.
That was my question.
Yeah. The unfortunate thing is, so you sort of make your best projection, your best estimate, however, grants, Title I, could be cut.
Right.
And the, certainly the federal IDEA grant, that's a big one that there's getting a lot of discussion.
Yep.
And that's one that not only helps us in East Slum Meadow immensely, it helps every school district across the Commonwealth immensely, so.
So, when would we get an idea of?
If I can, if I can just jump in.
Perfect.
End of last month, a group of state senators went and met with the Congressional Massachusetts delegation to pitch their case about not cutting any of this federal money. The federal budget isn't due until October, so.
Wow.
It may be well after that, because the federal government, in the past, has operated on a month-to-month budget as they wade through all of these things, but pitches are being made to Congress not to mess with any of these funding sources that we're currently talking about.
And as you say that, just a point, going back to Dr. Welsh's presentation, just for everybody who's possibly at home watching us, private schools, the private schools Dr. Welsh is talking about, those are specialized schools that specifically support students with very specific learning disabilities, not necessarily the private schools that voucher programs.
Right.
Possibly connect students to, just a distinction, as we're looking at the whole picture.
Right.
Okay. So, that brings us to questions. We think that not only is it a fiscally responsible request to ask the town, but we also feel that we can move students, continue to move students forward and have similar success, and hopefully even better success. Like the Eclipse, we're awfully close, one or two points off the ELA in math, to moving to the top of the LPVAC. The LPVAC districts, you know, we took the names off, so that everybody can remain innocent.
That's no problem.
All right. At this point, I will open it up for any questions that anyone may have.
I guess, I'm sorry, is the council still on the same date track as they, do they know when their?
I believe so. The council had a budget meeting last week, so they discussed a lot of the different budget items, one of which was our request. They, I believe, they are having. They, I believe they are having a public budget hearing on the 23rd. So they're looking to hopefully approve the budget before June 1st.
According to the charter, the budget has to be approved by June 1st. So they're, it's a tight timeline, but, and also according to the charter, they are supposed to hold at least one public hearing on their, on the townwide budget. And I think we've been invited to present ours again as well.
Okay.
And the last discussion they had is, I saw, in terms of our supplemental was the all, was funding all three.
Yes, they were.
All the supplementals, the third being the curriculum renewal, possibly at a one time versus a reoccurring, but at least we're talking about all three things, so that's a good thing.
And if that's, if they fund it one time in that way, we can go after the science materials that we need as well as the AP textbooks, and then obviously each budget development process begins anew.
Right.
I have great faith in these two ladies over here.
And we do appreciate the town council listening to our story.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Supporting us, so thank you very much.
This was, this was an interesting year because it is the first year with the charter, and it's a learning process and a learning curve for all of us, so.
I, I mean, I feel like we've lived with this since January, so.
Yeah, I know, I know.
My questions have all been answered back two months ago.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody else has any questions.
I was just wondering if I could, Pam, on the, on the whole picture.
Yep.
The FY '17 estimated rollover circuit breaker.
Yep.
Is that a typical number for a rollover on?
We can legally roll over the entire, an entire year's circuit breaker into the next year for obvious reasons that we talked about. We always know that special ed can change very quickly, and some of those are very, very high amounts that we can incur. We also don't know when grants can be reduced. We rely on IDEA to help fund tuitions, so your question.
Is that a low number then, the 200?
It is, yes. We could project a little bit more, but again, I try to be conservative. We can prepay up to three months for special ed, yes.
And then the other one I had was the school lunch revolving. Are contractual services, what are their contractual services for that department?
School lunch contractual, sorry, I'm looking. Is that the 36,000?
Yeah. I was just wondering what we contract.
Well, remember, all employees' food services are out of the revolving fund, correct?
Yep.
Right, but he said contractual services.
So they're in salary and supply, so I'm just wondering what we contract.
The copier could come under there, like their, their copiers, I charge them. And I could, I could look for additional things and let you know exactly.
Like cleaning the ovens, things like that, don't you have?
Yeah, thank you, yes. Maintenance, that's exactly it. The contracted services when they come in. It could be pest management, Belmont laundry, those kind of, yes, thank you.
Yeah, the circuit breaker, that figure varies the year, we never know.
Well, we get 70 to 73% of that, for that dollar threshold that Mr. Smith spoke about.
In good years, the state has been very good the last few years.
But they could change that, that's absolutely true.
When I first came in in 2010, we were in the 60, 65%.
That's, that's one of the reasons, as I said, the state legislators have been talking to the Mass Congressional delegation about these grants because every district is impacted if there's a cut.
And that would be an easy one if they're looking to reduce a deficit of any kind.
Yeah.
Easy from, in terms of putting pen to paper, very hard in terms of what it does to student support.
Deidre?
And the only thing I wanted to comment on was the kindergarten tuition revolving account. Are we almost done with that or we have a plan in place for the next few years to try to, so in a couple of years it will be gone?
Yeah.
It can only go back to the kindergarten program. So what we're doing is we're supporting materials and I think now two, two staff members.
Correct.
And then the two items directly under our FY '18 proposed budget, the maintenance with DPW and the IT support.
Yeah, those I wanted to.
Have those been steady numbers?
Well, what those were before I came, IT and maintenance used to be in our operational budget, was my understanding. And those two items were actually taken out so that that, that was the amount of money that came out of our budget and went to like IT's budget. That was, that was before I came here, so that had to be three years ago.
This is the same number though?
Correct, yes.
The number determined never changed.
However, in the DPW budget, they have requested the last few years to increase the maintenance line item. I think only last year.
And I didn't go back to, you know, Bruce or Ryan to ask, you know, additional monies, and I could certainly find that out for you, but those were the numbers that Terry used before me and I just.
And we tend to exhaust those throughout the year.
Yeah, yeah. We always get those memos that about this time, that, yeah, there are, there are no more, there are no more funds, people.
Well, they split the 161 pretty evenly.
Okay.
And one side is more, what I would say, the material side that the DPW crew that does a lot of the work in our schools will use.
Yep.
And the other side is your, sort of your contracted services when you get your elevators inspected and some of the groups that come in to prepare the schools to get ready for opening day. So that might be something we want to look at, maybe since that side gets exhausted, almost three quarters of it is gone.
Contractually, every year?
Yeah, by, by August, because you're doing all the work.
Right. Extra services.
And then, so then if you need something such as the fire alarm company to come out, it's coming out of that side, and that's where you might have a freeze. We freeze on the other side, we do, as well as that if somewhere we come out of the fall and we've had a lot of repairs that Bruce's team has covered.
Right.
And then we might have to go, okay, we're, we're getting into emergency time only. The other thing that we can do certainly is we have the ability to transfer from line to line, so you could always transfer eventually.
But it takes it away from something else.
It takes it away from something else?
Be careful.
Because I really do want to compliment you guys for working on this budget. I think I say this every year, I know that you do a great job of really trying to work with the town parameters that have given to us.
That was all of you, I think.
No, it is a team, but I do want to say that. I do want to say it is a team effort, and I think the number that you're presenting tonight is a good number. And the percentage is there.
And it all starts with the leadership team. I hope everyone realizes that. The principals bring forward their building's needs, and we talk about it and weigh it out, and from those, how many did we have, 20, 13?
Yeah, it was a lot.
18 to 20 original requests, about 300,000.
We narrowed it down to three on what would be in the best interest of the district and bringing, yeah.
And I have to compliment the leadership team because that's, that's not easy to do.
Right.
Those are all valid requests.
Yes.
So when you see your requests go by the wayside and you do that for the greater good of all the students, it's pretty impressive. It's not an easy thing to do.
We don't have to vote on this, though.
No, you do have to vote on the bottom line.
All right, we do, but we've got to get through the, you know, questions.
Oh, I was just asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. Pam, on the, the next page, the level source budget.
Yep.
The utilities, now I know that's not our, all of our utilities because the DPW budget pays the utilities. So what are those?
There are a few of the schools, like we have a couple of smaller accounts, I'm trying to remember with Mountain View, there's one in Meadowbrook, additional utilities beyond what the normal ones are, I can get you the detail, but I think also in here might be.
Phones?
Well, yes, that's exactly what it is, Gordon. Yep, that's it, it's a phone.
We do phones out of our budget.
The phones, that's correct.
And the rest of utilities are out of the DPW.
That's correct, yep. Thank you, Gordon.
And then fuel, transportation, has that been locked in for next year or not yet?
No, it, it has.
It has? How'd it do?
We did good.
I think it was in your snapshot.
Relative.
I think you have it in your, I think you have it.
That's this year.
That was this year, it was very close to this year.
Close again? Good.
Yes.
But it's a competitive, it's the town that's doing the bid, right?
LPVC does it, and the whole town.
For the whole town.
Yep, that's correct.
Participate in, okay. All right, are there any other questions on the budget? All right, yes.
I approach.
Yes, please approach and identify yourself, please, for the record.
Jonathan Torsha, 79, Tompkins Ave. I was just wondering hypothetically, you know, you were speaking to about the grants at the federal level and at the state level. If there was to be a loss of those, what would happen to our budget?
So that's a, that's a great question. One of the advantages we were just talking about before that school departments have is that we are allowed to transfer between line items. So inevitably, if one of those grants gets reduced significantly, especially if you're talking about something like the IDEA grant, then we will have to transfer money to make sure programs continue for students who are being supported through specialized programs.
So most realistic case, we should be fine even in the event of something unfortunate.
Yeah, you would have to, something to Mrs. Mayhew's point, something's going to lose. And so you look to identify, to make a transfer where you have the least impact on student learning while also keeping the lights on and the building around you up.
Another option, we could go back to the town council, request an emergency transfer from free cash if there was some sort of a horrific shortfall. That's been done in the past through a special town meeting, but with the new form of government, we could conceivably and under, legally go to the town council and explain the situation, and they would have the ability to transfer money into our budget to eliminate the shortfall. So there are, no students will be impacted. We'll work with every means possible to make sure that nothing, we don't skip a beat.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to approve the FY '17.
2018?
2018 budget.
So move.
Sorry. Budget request.
Budget request.
They say the amount?
Yeah.
Yes, say the amount.
What's the amount I'm using?
The 29.
29.
Remember, this is a request that goes to the town council, and the town council will vote overall on the town budget.
That number's different.
That one's, oh, because it doesn't include the state grant. Not include the state grant.
This, this is your request.
This is the request.
The town.
That's what we, that's what we.
The whole picture has all your grants in there.
But we approve the grants separately when they come through.
Right.
So approve, this is our, this is our budget request, so that's the amount.
And move the, we approve budget request FY '18 of 29,245,201.
There is second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? Everybody good?
Yep.
Hearing none, all those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, and at this point, I will close the public hearing and we will resume our normal agenda.
Mrs. Mayhew, on the whole picture slide, first line all the way to the right is your request.
Thank you.
You are.
Okay. All right, moving along to the assistant superintendent for business report. Pam, you're up.
Hey, good evening. In your packet is the FY '17 quarterly financial report as of March 31, 2017. At this time of year, we are beginning to look towards the end of the year. We only have three months remaining. I'm very happy to say that the FY '17 budget is projected, projected to finish on target. Contractually, the last day that they're able to do purchase orders is April 30th, but it came on a Sunday this year, so it was May 1st. I will continue to monitor the budget lines. As the year winds down, I will prepare the transfers to be approved for the end-of-year expenditures. As always, it is imperative to remember that the balances provided are snapshot in time and are changing constantly. So the first three pages are, you know, descriptions of the line items. I always like to keep them there for you to remind you about certain things. And then page four and five are where the financials are. So if you go to page four, that is the operational budget, where you have the salaries on the top half and the expenditures in the bottom half. And you'll see to the bottom right, we have a very healthy balance there as of March 31st. And I have no concerns to bring forward at this time. The next page, page five, is your federal grants, state grants, and all of your revolving accounts. You can see clearly, again, they have available budget balances that you'll see there, which are expended through the, through the year. The grants will be, you know, expended down. We have to turn back any funds that we don't spend, whereas the revolving accounts roll over from one year to the, to the next.
Do you know if the, I thought it revolved includes the spring use of fees?
They are not in there yet.
That's why they're.
Because remember, this was March 31st.
And do we, do we a good job of using up those federal grants?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Never returning.
Yeah, we, we work very well together.
Or carry them over. Do I need to do some carryover? You can apply for multi-year delegation on, at least, on a few of the grants that I oversee, the Title I and Title II. But we tend to keep, it's cleaner to keep it with just one fiscal year running at a time, so we're able to extend them all.
Very impressive.
And as I said, circuit breaker last year was a lot larger, carrying forward.
Correct, but that, so that was what really ended up happening. Remember, we do our best projections at the time, and yes, it was a lot more. We were able to carry over the full amount.
So should we be worried about that?
Should we be worried about it?
That it's lower this year going?
I'm just, I'm, I'm putting through a lower guesstimate and anticipating that it probably will be higher than that. But I like to just use a more conservative number.
That makes sense.
Do you remember one of the examples that we had shown town council was how fluid some of our special education costs can be? And we had a couple of students move in that required out of district services.
This year?
This year, yeah. So that line item was a good deal more than we had originally projected.
Yep. And we're, we're, we have expenses out of the athletic stadium rental fee.
Athletic stadium.
I thought we were saving all that.
Those expenses, we use it for maintenance, and so generally it's, well, this will be patching. We do patch the field periodically.
Oh, really? Okay, good. Well, that's what it's for.
It also is used to buy those carpets that cross the track.
Yep.
Which I know, I'm sure that the athletic department thinks that I'm a crazy person because I consistently talk about those things and say, if we need more, we'll get more. Because I'd rather preserve the track than have cleats walk across it.
So is that number building up fast enough? I know we talked about replacing.
And I want to remind everyone, down the bottom, there's an asterisk there that in the high school gift account actually is $6,550, which is for field and track donations that, it was before my time here, and, okay, so I just.
This is, well, these were donations that boosters and there was a fundraiser in 2011 as we were looking to complete the lights and so forth. So that's money that's designated for the stadium.
Oh.
So you added in to, you know, the 19,000.
It would make sense that, I'm going to check with the town accountant, but it would make sense to me that we should probably get that out of the gift account and get it into the athletic stadium, but I will.
If you can move it, it's, it's gift stuff coming in.
Well, and that's why I do.
Oh, yeah.
But if it's specific for the stadium, then it would make sense to me to have it there. But again, I'll, I'll talk to the town accountant and perhaps bring that forward to you.
So I know it's a totally different subject, but are we on pace to replace that turf with the revenue that we're receiving?
You wouldn't replace the turf because that's probably going to be closer to a million dollars, but the track, you could resurface the track.
Okay, is that what we had discussed?
Yeah, because it's more realistic to get to a number.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking because we're not anywhere.
No, you, we won't be able to rent it enough to get to that level.
Yeah.
So that will have to be a capital project, but.
Got a few more years on that.
Yeah, the track itself is in very good shape.
Yeah, it looks good, yeah. I, I walked it yesterday, it still is, it still is in good shape. It really is, considering years.
How many years would a turf have then?
Supposedly it's anywhere from 12 to 15 years. I think Holyoke High, Holyoke High School was one of the first turf fields, and I think it went well beyond the 12 to 15 years. So now, not having played, and not having played on that surface, I don't know, you know, did they go past the point where they shouldn't have? That part I don't know. I'm just very happy to see that it's lasted, but I think they have either renewed it or what plans.
Right, Holyoke High School?
Holyoke was the first.
Yeah, we were just, my daughter's club soccer team plays there at home. It's a brand new turf.
Okay, so they just renewed.
They just replaced it.
Beautiful, it's purple.
Right.
On the outside, it's purple. In the middle, purple grass around the outside. It's nice, it's neat, yeah.
Kind of like the blue of Boise State, right?
Yeah, not that, not that.
Can I make finding that it's, I know there's repairs, and it hasn't been a lot, right?
Not, not an incredible amount.
Okay, and they keep up well with it?
Yeah. Mr. McGee's excellent. He's on top of that, as well as Mr. Fenny and another gentleman, his name is escaping me from the TPW.
Because it's like, if there's something you can, you know, I can say pull, I'm just exaggerating. Something you can pull is going to get pulled, but if it's fixed, it'll.
Right.
Yeah.
So how old is our shirts and field now? You can't recall?
Uh, he was put in and opened up in two thousand eleven, so six years.
So we're about halfway, halfway, halfway to where, wherever. We'll see.
We have to put that on a capital project.
Start putting it on.
I want to at least go, as we do that, say, but look, we can resurface the track without any money from the town.
All right, any other questions on the quarterly budget report? Do I have a motion to accept this?
Move to accept the third quarter, quarter fiscal report.
There is second.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving along, thank you, Pam. Moving along to item six, old business, six point one, policy BDA, school committee organization meeting. This is our second reading on this. I don't know if anybody had any edits or anything.
Move to approve policy BDA, school committee organization meeting.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Six point two, update on the E L Tennis Association.
Okay, in your packet, you have the original letter from the East Long Meadow Tennis Association. We had gone through this at our last meeting, where they're looking to purchase a backboard, which allows for one individual to practice. Suppose you could have two individuals, if all the courts were taken, to practice on the backboard as well. And it would be useful not only for our tennis team, be obviously useful for residents as they're waiting for a possible partner to arrive, but also our phys ed classroom, classes have indicated that a lot of times, they have uneven numbers when they use the courts, and so a backboard would be beneficial there as well. You had asked us to check in with physical education, high school administration, and athletic director. I did include the athletic director's response in talking with the high school principal. They fully support this. The one, as well as physical education supports it, the one question that is in this letter is that you can go for, and I think the Tennis Association is recommending that we go for the higher-end backboard, for lack of a better term. It's about a thousand dollars more. You've seen the athletic revolving account. That's where the money would come from, and so it's a question whether we do that, approve both getting the backboard and also possibly move to the higher level.
Well, they also suggested a different location for Mr. McGee.
I think that was the original location, the back corner.
It is the original. Yeah, it is the original location.
But he clarified it.
Right, so they're agreement as to where it's going.
I think there was confusion, but the Tennis Association was thinking that back fence, which is away from the parking lot in the back courts, you do it on either, either end court. I think Mr. McGee, I don't think he said it in his email, but he was recommending maybe as you face the courts from the parking lot, the far right.
I thought he meant far left, towards, it says towards, towards the stadium and the baseball field. Well, it's baseball field.
My suggested location would be.
You could say it in his email, yeah.
And I, my, I envisioned it as the side towards the stadium.
Yeah.
Yep, in that back left corner. That's how I envisioned it, but.
Do you want to go off their recommendation?
That's fine.
I'll verify it. Not necessarily the one in the email, let's verify it.
Yeah, I think certainly the back left corner seems appropriate in terms of, Mr. McGee mentioned visibility for, of students and such, so that makes perfect sense. So I agree with that, it's whether or not it's the back.
Depends which way you're looking at the question.
Which way you're looking at it.
Should we just request that Mr. McGee's there prior placement?
Well, we'll just clarify where they want.
We don't mean to talk with the association.
We'll clarify where they want it.
I think you should actually talk with them, though, you know?
Well, yeah. And they got funding for the, the straight.
They're willing to put in the two thousand dollars and four hundred, two thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars for the first level.
And there would be no additional cost to the town?
The additional piece, I don't think they have installation, so we would probably work with our TPW.
We have to find out if they're willing to do that.
Yeah.
And once it's in, as with the tennis courts and their donation to, to funding the tennis courts, then it's, then it becomes the property of the, the school system.
Right.
Right.
So is there any other maintenance involved with these boards over time?
No.
Not aware of, so.
Over time, I mean, I don't know what they're made of now. I'm assuming, they usually are made of type of plywood, but so it might be painting.
Yeah, but it's, might have been ten, ten years.
I bet you the product, products today are made a little differently than the ones I'm thinking of.
I like the idea.
I haven't played tennis on a backboard in a while.
Because it's something everybody can use.
Since they're plywood.
Those don't get locked, those courts, right? So they would be, and there's lighting.
They don't lock all gates, but I know that we used to, because we were starting to get some skateboarding.
Yeah.
We used to lock them. It's a great sport, just on the courts.
Skateboard.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
So we were locking the front, at least as a deterrent, but we didn't lock all entrances.
So I like the idea of fully funding it. I don't know, for me, you know, especially when we're in budget times and we're requesting all these other things to, then additional funds on, it's not a random request, but not something that we've had in our capital projects or whatnot. I think it's certainly advantageous to the students and the people of the town, but I don't know that, that I'd feel comfortable spending more money out of our budget to upgrade. I do agree that there's benefits to the upgrade, but I think based on where we're at, I would prefer.
No, you would take it from the athletic revolving, so it only, can only go to athletics.
Right.
It is made out of fur. Douglas. Douglas fur.
Yeah.
Is that plywood?
It isn't, no.
Yeah, well, it's a wood, so.
It's plywood.
It's, it's.
They're high-quality weatherproof overlay.
I want to follow up with Mr. Thompson. If you, I, I have a, I have a revolving account. Maybe we should take it out of the operation, we feel it's that important. Because if I'm a school paying a hundred and forty-nine dollars to play track, do I have a beef that my money now, even if it's only one dollar, is going to, towards tennis?
But is that fair if you're playing hockey compared to track?
No, I don't want to.
Well, I mean, we can, we can get into that.
My goal has been, and aren't all of our goals, I'm sure, is to keep that, that, the cost of athletics down as much as possible. So, you know, because this is kind of an extra, you know, as I said, I, I'm okay with the straight one. I know you like the.
No, I, we looked at it. We looked at it.
I was just saying that they were an incredible partner through the construction of those courts, raising about thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, but so now the football association comes to us and wants our field coats, kicking that, and, you know, it could.
It sets a precedence going forward now, how many other sports might go forward, say.
Yeah. It was part of our capital project, perhaps, perhaps it was on this, if they want to partially fund bleachers, and then, okay, then yes, let's take the rest out of.
But didn't they partially want to fund certain things back in the day when the turf was going in, and they had all kinds of things? I don't know at that point what went in and what didn't.
The town fund.
I want a product that's overall going to be better in the long run, I guess.
I know.
And I, I know where you guys are coming from, but I, I guess I feel like is, when I look at it, you know, is one going to be sturdier than the other? Is one going to have a longer lifespan than the others?
I think they're both attached to the fence.
You know?
Well, they do, but I, I think one is, the only difference is one's curved and the other one's straight. That's the only difference I can see.
And I've hit off a flat backboard before. It's not impossible. I mean, you know, where it's, you know what it's going to do? Well, it's.
Too much of a difference?
It bounces down versus.
Yeah.
You know, less realistic of a return.
Yeah.
For a player like me, there's a big difference. Better player.
His next career.
His next career.
After his retirement.
I mean, it.
I don't want to improve the concept, but I don't know, maybe we go back to the Tennis Association, ask them if they can look, relook at their finances. I mean, I, I can, I can understand it's a better product, but I'm a little bit wary right now of using athletic revolving account money to fund it, because the students pay user fee. That's a good point.
I'm in that, I'm in that, I'm in that same line of thinking. I really, you know, I really am. I understand what the reality of, you know, maybe it is a better product, but it's, you know, I'm concerned about, you know, I'd love to do away with the user fee, but we know that's never going to happen. I don't think we can ever raise enough money for that. But again, to spend it down and opening the door for a lot of other booster clubs to come.
We do have that rental account there.
But that's for the replacement of the track.
That's specific, that's dedicated, yeah.
For the stadium.
Oh, really?
We can use a revolving.
We can use it whatever we want.
Our intention has always been for that rental fee to go to maintenance of that facility.
I think, I think the track is probably going to go before the field or some aspects of the track where we may need that money. All right?
So would it be something that we can discuss with the East Long Meadow Tennis Association? And should, since now we're in the point of reconciling accounts, you're seeing operational money. So at that point, if there's money available, would you like to put it, put it toward the higher-end backboard?
To me, it's less of two evils, but it.
Or there is the rental.
Yeah.
And rental, you're talking about district-wide rental?
Oh, the facilities rental?
Yeah.
How much is in that?
Just another.
How much is in that? Do you know offhand? How much is in that?
About twenty-five thousand.
What's the exact amount? Twelve, what's, what's a thousand?
A thousand dollars.
Yeah, you're going from, you're going from two thousand four hundred and thirty-nine to three thousand four hundred and ninety-two.
There are two options available with the backboard we have chosen. The East Long Meadow Tennis Association is prepared to purchase the straight tilt series backboard described below upon your approval. If the school department is willing to fund the thousand-dollar difference in cost, the dual curve backboard would be an even nicer, more realistic board for the facility.
Right, so, but in reading that, right, East Long Meadow Tennis Association is prepared to purchase the straight tilt series backboard described below upon your approval.
Right.
I think they're okay with the straight one, too. And they, so they've, they're funding for that, they're giving us the option to, to jump up to the other one. I don't think it, I think they, they would be satisfied with the straight one.
Right.
And it would certainly be an improvement, and we're certainly grateful and thankful for all the work and the fundraising that they've done to achieve that on their own and suggest it. But again, you know, I, I, I'm pretty, I'm pretty okay with the straight one myself. I don't know about additional funding, just one of five. I'll make a motion whenever you want, or if you don't, or somebody else does.
Well, it's just, you know.
May I try a motion before you, Mr. Thompson?
Please.
I motion that we approve the first figure of two thousand four hundred and thirty-nine point four-four pending Mrs. Smith's discussion with the Tennis Association.
So we're not approving the money, though. We're approving the, the.
Yeah, that they would purchase it.
The placement of the.
We have the structure.
I told you, they wouldn't have money.
No.
They would purchase it.
All right, what we need to approve is.
Is that what you're trying to get at, though?
Maybe, but since, here's the best we can do. Maybe, they may come back and say, listen, we can do a fundraising, give us a couple of months, and we can raise a thousand dollars. Maybe that possibly is just.
They can raise it?
Well, I, my, my feeling was they wanted to get this thing done sooner rather than later, so, for this year, not wait. You're trying to do funding, fundraising, you know, it's for this year. I don't think it's for next year or the fall or anything. I think, you know, I don't know.
For the tennis season.
I think it's for the current Tennessee, spring, summer, yeah. I don't know what to turn around.
How much do they help us with, with the original courts?
Thirty thousand dollars.
I don't know, I guess sometimes I feel like, you know, they gave us the catalyst to get this to where it is, and it is definitely, I'm very thankful we did it, because of course, Long Meadow runs right after us. But.
They got community preservation.
Right.
Yeah, they got community preservation.
Exactly. I know that, which is, you know, and I, and I guess I feel like.
They resurfaced their track with community preservation.
Yes, they did.
Yeah.
Now, keep in mind.
So, yeah, we could go into debt with that even more if they buy the railroad property, just nobody knows what's going on.
Right.
They're talking about that.
Oh, really?
Yes, they are.
So.
All right, hold on, let's change.
Let me, let me, let me, let me throw another thing out there. Last year, if you recall, they did come to us for a schedule board or some sort of a stadium board.
Bulletin board, yeah.
Bulletin board that we did not approve, because it had their name on it.
Well, it was more, I think, about advertising.
It was, it was advertising, so we didn't approve that. But, so, I mean, you want to redo the motion, or?
I almost want to table it.
We can table it again.
I mean, I just.
Tabled it for.
We tabled it, yeah.
That's true.
So.
If we pa, if we want to do the straight board, I'll, you know, you know, if they want to, if they can get additional funds, maybe the motion should be that we'll approve the straight board, and then if they're able to obtain the additional funds and they want to put the other one in, we're okay with it.
Yeah.
Figure out how to word that.
Yeah, they may want to go from the conservation committee and ask for a thousand dollars.
Community preservation?
Good, yeah.
They'll never get it. They'll never get it.
Especially on short notice like this, they'll, I don't think that's.
No, they're not, the CPC doesn't even meet on a regular basis.
And I think they have a timeline, too, of when you have to go to them.
Oh, yeah, because it's coming up.
They have like a fiscal year also.
It's coming up on, if you remember, we used to approve their spending at town meeting.
Yeah.
So their timeline is probably coming to, their year is coming to the end.
So, so I, I'll, I'll move that we approve the realistic backboard, straight tilt series donated by the East Long Meadow Tennis Association, and allow for the realistic backboard dual curve series if they are able to come up with additional funding.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just wanted to thank them again.
Oh, absolutely.
This is more, but we're in it with them.
Yeah.
Certainly, it's just the precedent that it sets and the tight budget constraints that we have. This will be a nice addition.
It will.
I don't want to take away from what they've done or what they're, what they're giving to the town, so.
Very well stated, very well stated.
Can we have a second?
So we had a first, I seconded.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving along to new business, seven point one, participation in the Fourth of July parade. Is that time of year again?
I never motioned to participate in the Fourth of July parade.
There you go.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Do I build a flow?
It's checking. I don't know if we have time to look for.
We probably. Rich and I are not for reelection, though, so if we're not here, that's why we're not showing up for the.
Yeah, there you go.
Caveat.
Any, was there a second in that?
I second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
We want to be near the band, right?
Yeah.
We'll make our way over there anyway.
Yeah, we, we kind of just.
You're, you're, you're running around that day, right?
In front of the van, they keep you moving.
Yeah, they, that's curious as well.
All right. Moving along to seven point two, school committee evaluation. We'll bring this back up so we can beat this up again.
No interest.
No interest, okay.
I think we, I think we continually evaluate ourselves. We're always discussing. We have a lot of three to two, four to one votes. I think we're very comfortable with each other. I don't, I don't see why we have to look for a formal process. I don't know, maybe the personal thing would be beneficial.
Go ahead. That's why I put it on there.
I, I feel strongly that we should be doing it, because we ask all these other people to evaluate themselves, and we read evaluations, and it doesn't have to be a very lengthy process. We could take five or 10 minutes out of a meeting or during the meeting and just go through it. I think it, I think it gives expectations for not only us, but for the public. They can see what we do and how it's going.
I did reach out to Glenn Kuchar, and in front of you was what he sent me.
The charge of course on you?
Yeah, it is, it's from, it's the, it's the one that MASC recommends.
Which one? Check what's good?
Yeah.
This one or the other one?
No, the whole thing is part of it.
This right here?
No, well, that.
That's, that's the one in the packet.
That's the one in the packet. This is the, the one in front of you, the hard copy, is the one I got from, I like MASC.
Yeah, I like this one from the MASC.
I mean, what we could do, and I'll just sort of say, dear. Is, is like a retreat day with the leadership team. We align our goals with their development of the SMART goals, and that's, you know, so that we make sure that we're heading in the right direction.
Yeah.
I like that idea.
All right, because that's what it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Because that's, that's what I think, that's what the bottom line is. Are we aligned with what's going on in the schools? So, and we, everything is directed off the SMART goals, so.
How it did I do? Work with the leadership in the retreat days?
Yeah.
I tell you.
I think it, it'll just give us, I think it's better guidelines as to what we're doing and how it relates to what the schools are doing, and then it just looks better, I think, within the community and the public. The other thing that, and that's bringing up, remember back when things were changing and everything was kind of sort of up in the air, and there was a lot of, before most of us were even on the board, we're kind of, we set expectations. Do you remember? Have we? I wonder if those should, while we're doing this, just be brought up to see if they're still valid and they're still.
Well, that stuff is always valid. That doesn't, no, it doesn't change. What, what, what happens is it changes to an extent of what we're doing.